Every reason I got two of these?
One of them's a revive.
Just to have them before they don't.
Oh, okay, version two.
Yeah, a version one, version two.
Got you. I understand. It doesn't look.
It wasn't. Four and a half hours.
They do.
They didn't have to have skin graft. Actually, it's getting enough skin to cover it.
That's good. That was good.
Skin cancer.
They mind?
I'll upgrade from Courtney. Send out a message.
Neil, was Matt gonna be here?
He's supposed to be here.
You ready?
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll have the pledge of allegiance and then we were gonna have the invocation, but something must have happened, so we'll have a moment of silence. So if everybody please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Have a fairly full agenda for tonight and we need a motion to approve the agenda as is. There was no changes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, that carries. Have a couple sets of minutes Tuesday, January the 16th. We'll take them both at the same time. Thursday, May the 23rd. Also, the public hearing budget was in there. And if we need to, we can take any part of those out or do them as a whole.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, motion carries on all of them. First is public comments. Has anybody signed up or anybody wishing to speak? Front and center, just state your name, please, and who you represent.
I am Bryant Wilkins. I'm the chief court counselor for juvenile justice here in the 23rd or 34th Judicial District and 23rd Juvenile Justice District. I have with me Robin Beeson. She is the executive director of the Children's Center of Northwest North Carolina. So, we're here tonight, we're aware of what the 24-25 budget and the match for JCPC is going to be tonight. But just wanted to, to express to you guys the programs that we were planning to fund with that 20% match that was requested and then also just kind of make you aware and put on your radar that we would, we would like to come back in the future and maybe request a budget amendment if possible. But I wanted, I wanted Ms. Beeson to be able to tell you about these programs so that you're aware of what we can provide for the youth of Allegheny County.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do. I also serve as a town commissioner for the town of Dobson, so I know what difficult situations you have to do and navigate, so I appreciate what you do. The Children's Centers provided services for Allegheny County for over eight years. We're a nonprofit. We know how to stretch our dollar. Usually nonprofits can stretch a dollar three to one for what local private industry or government can do. Currently, what we proposed that was approved by the JCPC to provide for Allegheny County youth and families are several programs. One is called Teen Court, which is a restorative justice program that the legislation passed to make sure all counties had access to a restorative justice. So Teen Court gives kids a second chance. We utilize teen volunteers from the community at the high school, they have to be 14 and up, to serve as the jury prosecutor and defense attorney to give kids a sanction or sentence. And they get to order them to community service or they do restitution or apology letter for their offenses. And then they have to come back and serve on the jury, which gives them a positive peer influence. We've had a lot of success with our Teen Court here. The other part of that is community service and restitution, which is another legislative mandate to be funded in each county. It gives kids a way to pay back what they've done, to repair the harm in the community. So, for example, if they have graffiti in the local park, then we make sure they work off those hours to restore the harm or pay a victim restitution, which is part of the grant. The other proposed programs that we've provided, this Girls Circle and Council for Boys, and we provide that to youth in Allegheny County. We have a partnership with the First Methodist Church that allows us to use their space for free. And we provide, it is about better decision making for kids. They learn how to build positive relationship, positive peers. They meet weekly for 10 weeks, and it's the only program for youth funded in this county. The other program that was proposed and approved by the Allegheny Juvenile Crime Prevention Council this year was Strengthening Families. We saw a huge need of family conflict and how to work that out, parenting to keep kids off the street or out of trouble. And so this is what work on family continuity together, family values, family decision making, responsibility. And so the parents and the child, everybody in the family gets this in-home parenting program for 12 weeks that are referred to the program. So, all of our programs do provide transportation, family meals, snacks, so we help with resources. And your funds that you provide, where like nonprofits have to leverage other dollars, and it helps us when we get the county match to show in our other grants. And the other programs that leverages is we provide respite services to help families in need that need a break. We provide Strengthening Families and Incredible Years to Allegheny Families. It's not even included in this proposal, but we provide that service because we can leverage the dollars. Emergency funds for families, we've helped pay for utilities rent. Last week, we helped pay for a high school student to have a service vest for, I mean, a vest for her service dog so she could take her books to school because of her disability. So, I mean, it just helps so much. You get more than what you're paying for, the $12,000. Our board of directors are committed to serving our Northwest region, so we do our own fundraising too. And I pass my time to cut out five fifteen, say, "Okay, I understand how that goes." We do lots of fundraising all year long, I won't list them all, to help support it. So we put in a match too. And all your dollars stay in Allegheny County. Matter of fact, we pay $3,420 that goes back to the Blue Ridge Center where our office is located. And our staff and our resources are all here in Allegheny County. Just to wrap it up, your 20% match levers a lot of support for Allegheny County youth and, and families, and all dollars stay here and are reinvested back into Allegheny County. Thank you so much for hearing this and I hope, I'm gonna leave some information with April or with Danielle. This is the status of children in Allegheny County from NC Child and the Children's Centers annual report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comments that would like to speak? Now's your chance. See no movement, hearing nothing. I will go ahead and close the public comments. Moving right along to section A, presentation to the board. We have one item, public safety telecommunications recognition, and that would be Vice Chairman Michelle Luthman and Daniel Rotens. Thank you.
Speak first?
No, your name's first on the agenda, so you go ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, can we have y'all your dispatchers?
Do you want to up here now?
Yep, I think so.
Come on, folks.
I'll get you to introduce.
And I do, just for the record, I do still have one down the hall because, well, somebody's gotta answer the phone, so.
Understood.
I think they want you guys over here. Is there over here someone?
Yeah, that'll be fine. Well, in recognition of Public Safety Communicators Week, we want to thank you all for your service to Allegheny County. And you truly are the lifeline here in Allegheny. And, you know, when people are calling you, you have to keep a calm head and you have to get the services to the people quickly. And we know that it's a very emotional and not a very fun job at times. It can be very stressful, but I want to personally thank you so much. And I'm gonna read this, this resolution as soon as you say what, what you want to say.
Well, I just think, you know, it's important the work these guys do. We think about it now, how important it is. But if you go out in the community and you talk to people and you ask, you tell them you're a first responder, well, they think of a firefighter, they think of a medic or police officer. These guys are the first first responder. You know, and I just think, you know, they're behind the scenes, like we talked about, they come into work before we get here, they leave after we, we're gone. So we don't see them. And, you know, they're kind of, they're that, that voice behind the screen on the other end of the phone. And they're there for these people when they're having probably the worst day of their lives. So, you know, it's important to recognize these guys for all the work they've put in, the multitude of hours that they spend, you know, training year in and year out. And it's a reflection on the service that we provide, the work that they put in. I think you guys know, I've kind of mentioned June the 1st was my goal for EMD and we're doing it. We're June the 1st and they're, they're live. So, now there are some kinks we're gonna work out because it's pretty new to us too, but we're there and that in itself is a reflection of the work that they have put in.
Do you introduce them all to?
I will, and actually, I want to start on this end because I want them to switch real quick.
Okay.
So on this end is David Green. David's been with us for about a year, so, and he's doing a heck of a great job. So if you'll run down the hall and grab Elizabeth. The headset's only worked to about the pop machine, so. Next up is Lily Yeoman, one of our newest ones. You've been with me for eight months or so, I think. Denver Cochran, about a year. Denver was previously employed over at the jail. Ariana, say it. Agumaday. I struggle with her last name and always have. Ariana's been with us for a couple of years now. Hannah Pruitt is my newest hire, and she was actually a telecommunicator down in Davie County for some period of time. Robbie Pruitt, most of you probably know Robbie, he's been with EMS and then with dispatch for a long, long time. Megan Smith, she's been with me for a little over a year now. And then Sherry Claudefilter actually took the call when Noah built the ark. So, Elizabeth will be here in a second, but if you want to go ahead and read what you need to read.
Okay, all right. I would like to read Monday, June 3rd, 2024, "A Resolution Honoring Allegheny County Public Safety Communicators. Whereas emergencies that require fire police, emergency medical services, or first responders can occur at any time, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and first responders is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas, the safety of our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Allegheny County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with accurate information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of Allegheny County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Therefore, it be resolved that the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners hereby honor the men and women of the Allegheny County Emergency Communications Center, whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe."
And our newest addition on the end is Elizabeth Ennis, and she's been with me for about two years now, so. Sorry to call her out on her wrong. Elizabeth Ennis.
And we thank you, Daniel, too.
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to say, these guys, they're not used to being in the limelight, so it is much to their chagrin that they are here to get their picture taken. So I really appreciate them coming down here and, and, you know, letting everyone see who they are. Thank you.
Wait just one minute.
Everything you do.
I gotta get another picture. Thank you.
Comments?
Yeah. I just want to say that you guys are living proof that we do have people that will work twenty, around the clock. And I do appreciate that because we don't think about it. But while most of us are asleep or spending time with our family, whether it's cookout or whatever we're doing, you guys are always working. And I think, yes, you do, I think sometimes people do forget, not in a bad way, but we take that for granted. And I just want to say, I really do appreciate what you all do. And we're glad to have you.
Glad to, any comments?
Y'all do a great job back there. I couldn't stand it. There's no windows in that place. I'd go crazy, but you do a great job.
Having sat in the seat that you sat, you're sitting in and taking a few of those calls, I'm glad it's you and not me now because the pressure is there and I felt it. Appreciate everything you do. You've taken a couple of calls from me and sent out the ambulance a couple of times, and I really appreciate you did, Dan. Thank you for what you do.
Michelle, anything, Dan?
I just want to say thank you so much because what would we do without you guys?
Michael?
I just, I just want to add to it. I get to see some of you more often than I see the others, but I appreciate you all the same. Daniel and Mary Rector, let's not forget, they've also shared time in those seats as well. And when we first started talking about bringing dispatch down here, you know, there was some challenges in being fully staffed and getting, getting the availability and the opportunity to have what you have before you today. So, I think that's a testament not only to the individuals, but to the leadership that Daniel and, and Mary has provided in, in their working. So, guys, we're, we're completely appreciative and proud of you and appreciate everything you do.
I can remember back not long ago when you all were up at the jail. And we made this move and it took a year and a half or, I mean, it took a long time for us to get to the facility that you're in now. And with the generator that we have, if we ever have a hurricane or a bad earthquake again. For our communications. And like Timmy said, that y'all work 24/7. It doesn't matter if it's Christmas, Thanksgiving, your birthday, somebody's on call all the time. And that protects the people of the county, and that's why we appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else to add?
You know, I've said it and said it again, but these guys make me look good, so, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. That was section A, presentation to the board. That was all under that one item. We moved to section B, two items, JCPC budget amendment. April, hand.
Good evening, commissioners. We're gonna continue to talk about JCPC just a little bit. And in your packet, you have a copy of this current year's JCPC funding plan that was submitted. Last year, when we went through the budget process and the commissioners approved the budget, what was approved for JCPC for this current year that we're in was $75,443. That was because there was only one of the major programs that was up and running with JCPC at that time. And when we met with a couple of the representatives from JCPC, we talked about that because they had a program that was changed with JCPC. And I, we still have the folks here, so if I'm saying anything wrong, we, we have them to correct me. So JCPC is now in need of that extra money. Traditionally, the county has provided a 20% match to the 69-774 that is provided from the state. So tonight, what is being requested for consideration is a, it would be a line item transfer because we do have the availability in this current year budget in economic development to find these funds, $6,904. Now that all the programs are back up and running with both, with the Teen Court and the things that Robin presented earlier.
Motion to place on the mid-month agenda.
Second.
Do you have a motion to move this to the mid-month?
$6,904.
Is it imperative that we vote for the funds tonight? Or can we wait until the mid-month?
Let's move it to the mid-month or?
We can do it mid-month with, with our budget and the audit and closing out the fiscal year. We can do that.
Motion stands.
Need a second?
Second.
Got a second? Danielle, you with us? Any other questions?
Okay, that item will be, we don't need to, we don't need to put that up for action. We can just go ahead and move it. Correct?
Yes.
I withdraw my motion and make the motion to fund as requested.
Redmond draws his second. And we just put it on the mid-month meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have it on the mid-month meeting.
Let's move to June the 2nd meeting. Okay, April, you're up again, Town of Sparta, infrastructure grant.
So our auditors were here on site. They actually did some remote work on May the 20th and were on site May the 21st and 22nd. The town grant, which has been in front of the board for a budget amendment for that 15 million, that is, we have done part of a pass-through of that fund, came up in discussion. Well, the way that bill was written and the intention of that bill was for Allegheny County to take lead on compliance. So, just to inform the board, we're gonna have a follow-up meeting with the town, we have that scheduled for this Thursday. We're gonna meet with the interim town manager with Peggy, the finance officer, and they have a project manager that they have inquired to help with this project. So we're gonna meet with them on Thursday. So at the next board meeting, I'll have an update on, maybe something may change with that grant with the town, so I just wanted to inform the board of that.
That would be for information for the next budget, board meeting?
It's just for information tonight, and it probably will be just for information at the next board meeting, depending on what happens at that meeting on Thursday.
Okay, anything else, April?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. That concludes section B. Move right along to section C, general business. These items are for action, and it looks like there's 10 of them. So, we'll go ahead and start transfer facility, the RFQ, and that's Mr. Carter.
Chairman, members of the board, the first item is the RFQ update for the transfer facility. If you recall, in previous meetings, we've talked about the need for the county to look at the potential construction of a new transfer facility. And in order to do that, we had to go through a request for qualifications from a certified engineer/architect group to begin the process. So we had an RFQ out, we had two firms that responded, TRC, which actually acquired Draper Aiden, which I believe most people around are familiar with, and an additional firm, Smith Gardner. I believe most people around are familiar with, and an additional firm, uh, Smith Gardner. We, uh, the Building and Grounds Committee, uh, each received a copy of the submitted information. We independently went through the scoring credentials for each firm and we came up with a recommendation to interview TRC. We had an interview with TRC. After the interview, it was the, uh, recommendation of the committee to recommend to the full board tonight to bring TRC on board as the engineer slash architect for the project. Uh, once the full board, uh, cast a decision on moving forward with that or not, I will then be able to provide, uh, Heather with a potential agreement drawn up with the group. They do not have those numbers in, in ink at this point, but are awaiting the decision tonight to move forward. So the recommendation of the Building and Grounds Committee is to, uh, bring on TRC as the engineer slash architect for the project. And if approved by the board at your next meeting or the following meeting, depending on the timeframe it takes to get the template in place, we'll bring, bring a contract back for consideration by the board.
Any questions? No questions. We need a motion in a second.
Make a motion that we, um, approve, um, TRC contracting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed likewise? Motion carries. And Mr. Carter, just, just for everybody's information, the, our cameras, is it working or not working?
I think we're still getting your, your back profile when you're at the podium. So, again, as a reminder, please have your backside in order whenever you step to the podium. Thank you.
Everybody combing back of their hair. Thank you. Uh, moving right along to item number two, uh, courthouse renovation, that's again Mr. Carter.
Pages 23 through 28, uh, is the basic AIA agreement that RND Architects has put together from your, uh, vote at your last meeting regarding the construction of, of the, or the renovation of the courthouse. Page 23 basically identifies you as the county and Bryant contracting as the contractor. It gives a short scope of the work. Um, page 24 just identifies the date of the agreement as beginning, as a beginning date. 25 identifies the contract sum and that is inclusive of the alternates identified below. For the record, the total contract sum is $1,488,075. Um, the next section is the base bid. It talks about the per cubic yard, if they find any unstable soils that they have to get rid of. Pages 26 are just standard terms. 27 talks about the retainage, which is 5%. 28, again, is standard terminology. 29, standard terminology. And 30 is the signatory pages, including the addendums, but I will defer to Heather if she has any comments additionally about the agreement.
The only thing, obviously, we need to add would be our audit and then, uh, for a signature line for me on the contract. So that can be an additional page that follows, um, either the exhibits or right after page 30, um, I guess would be eight of the contract, but page 30, we just add that in. That's standard for all of our contracts.
And there's a place for you?
We'd have to add it.
Okay.
But yes, and then it would be, we need our fiscal audit, um, also that needs to be added.
Any questions, John?
No.
Michelle?
I had you said 200 days to finish this project or?
That's what they're estimating, a 200-day project.
Make a motion to approve, um, the construction contract draft for Bryant Construction and, and give Heather the right to add those changes.
Second. Got a motion in a second. You okay? Oh, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Moving right along to, uh, item three, uh, budget consideration, 20, 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Mr. Carter, you're up again.
I'm a popular guy tonight. So, the first item is A, which is your budget ordinance, and that is found on pages 39 through 45.
Looking at the new version, we go.
Okay, so there's another version. Hang on just a second. I'm reading from the free, here we go. If you look at the top left, right, left-hand corner, uh, it says revised, 530, 2024, version two. Everybody got that one? Okay. So very quickly, just to summarize, the general fund, uh, if you go down to the bottom of it, you'll see it, $21,407,75. Uh, of course, each one of these funds or sections, as they're referred to in your ordinance, has an offsetting revenue. But if you go through each of one of these, you have Section 2, which is a fire tax fund, Section 3, fines and forts, Section 4 is the, uh, SCIF pool grant, Section 5 is the TDA, Section 6, transportation, Section 7 is the outdoor rec fund, Section 8, fairgrounds, Section 9 is the SCIF courthouse, um, Section 10 is the capital projects grant, which I'll remind the board that half of that went toward the generator. The remainder goes toward the design of the transfer facility. Section 11 is the opioid settlement fund. Section 12 is the, uh, drug fund. Section 13 is the register of deeds enhancement fund. Um, that's 14. 14 is the revaluation fund. 15 is the school capital project fund. 16 is the transfer facility fund. 17 is the register of deeds custodial fund. 18 is the 911 fund. And that is your last one for a total, including all funds, of $30,072,205. That ordinance is up for consideration tonight.
Any questions? Start with Greg.
This is what we went over the other night, right?
Yes, sir.
No questions.
Timmy?
No.
Michelle?
No.
And John?
No.
We need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. We're good. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed likewise? Motion carries, 5-0. Mr. Carter?
Next item is your proposed 24, 25 fee schedules. Those begin on page 46 and go through 72. These are reflections of your department heads that came in and talked about their proposed fee structures. Uh, I trust that each one has had an opportunity to ask questions or do the appropriate research on those and those fee structures are up for consideration tonight.
Anything else to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion, John, Michelle?
No.
Timmy?
No.
Greg? Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second and we're good to go. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed likewise, sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Look them 5-0. Mr. Carter, Section C?
Last thing, under your budget consideration is found pages 73 through 76, and that are, that is your 2025 pay grades and classifications. And those are the grade and classifications that I believe the county, uh, committed to sometime before I came, but those have been updated accordingly and are, uh, for consideration for adoption tonight.
Any questions, Greg? Timmy?
No.
Michelle?
No.
And John?
Motion, motion to approve the pay grades and classifications.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. You're good to go. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed likewise? Motion carries, 5-0. Uh, that finishes, Mr. Carter, for that for right now. Moving right along to, uh, Item 4, fuel bid awards. And Daniel?
Um, these are, we went over these last time. Hometown Oil is the only one that, there were three bids, but they were the only one that put in a bid for all of the services and all of their bids were the best option anyways. They gave us the best price on all of them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, 5-0. Uh, let's see, transfer wheel loader, David Spicer. It's item number five.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Board, uh, as you recall, for information at the last meeting, three bids were presented, uh, for wheel loaders, uh, one being a John Deere, the other being a Volvo, and the third being a Caterpillar. And as it turns out, uh, the Caterpillar, um, was the lowest bid at, uh, $344,478.88, which is $19,321.12 less than John Deere and $7,625.12 less than the Volvo.
As, any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, in accordance with General Statute 143, 131, .131, which concerns formal bidding process for the state of North Carolina, I make a motion that we accept the low bid from Caterpillar for $344,000 plus.
Second.
We got a second. Daniel? One minute. Mr. Carter?
Just want to make sure that we're acknowledging that this would take effect July 1 of 24, 25.
Any other discussion? If we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Greg, you up? Motion carries, 5-0.
For once, I'm on your side, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, item number six, school capital outlay budget amendment, um, April.
In your packets, you have budget amendment, uh, for the general fund, number 17. This is to add additional sales tax revenue to that capital outlay program for the school. We know sales tax has been increasing the past couple of years. It has also increased in the Article 40 and 42, that portion going to the school. So we just need to add some additional revenue to our budget.
Any questions or discussion?
Motion to approve the school capital outlay budget amendment.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. We're good to go. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Item number seven, it's still April.
Okay, we have several line item transfers. The first one is actually for Department of Social Services, just needing to transfer some money in between their budget to, um, cover some telephone expense, no, yes, for telephone expense, excuse me, $2,100.
Any questions or comments? Need a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Uh, item number eight, April for EMS.
The next one is for EMS and it's actually to correct something that was posted in the wrong line, a contract for EMS and to budget and to transfer a little bit more money to cover that contract for EMS.
Questions or comments?
What kind of contract was it?
I believe it was the new software contract for EMS call. Is that correct?
It was for-
I started to say David is here.
We have a service contract that, um, Stryker comes up and takes care of our monitors, our, our heart monitors and our stretchers and those, the, uh, Lucas devices. So it had actually, uh, increased just a little bit and that's what that is for, is to help us maintain those pieces of equipment.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments, David? If not, we need a motion in a second.
Make a motion for the transfer. Second.
John seconded. Good go. Any other discussion? Everybody in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries, 5-0. Uh, April, you're up again, public buildings.
The next one is to cover increase in utilities in David's budget in the public buildings and to, um, budget for increase in uniforms for his, excuse me, to transfer monies for uniforms also.
Any questions or comments? Here are none. We need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Daniel's ready. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed likewise, sign. Motion carries, 5-0.
And I believe-
Uh, item number 10.
Yeah, I believe the last line item transfer for tonight is for the kitchen. We do have all employees hired. They're helping set up, they're helping get contracts set up for, for ordering of food and the things that need to be done. Uh, we need to budget for some money till the end of the year to pay these individuals and their FICA and retirement expense. And we do have that available in economic development, grant expenses that are not going to be used this current fiscal year.
Any questions about this line item transfer?
Motion to approve the line item transfer for the kitchen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
All the questions I've got, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How much have we got in the kitchen right now?
Total amount? I, I don't have that in front of me, but I, I can have that for you the next meeting.
Fine.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise, sign. Motion carries, 5-0. Uh, that concludes, uh, general business for action. Moving right along, Section D, county manager comm- Moving right along, section D, county manager comments. Mr. Carter?
Just a couple tonight. Again, want to just recognize and appreciate those telecommunicators that we saw earlier tonight for what they do for this county. Additionally, I want to appreciate the support of the board for the adoption of the budget and all the, all the light items tonight. I think it's, I think it's a good budget. I think it provides the county with some opportunity for growth while maintaining the integrity of the fund balance. So I appreciate the support of that. We just talked about the kitchen. I'm fairly confident David Spicer will have a very good update for the board at your mid-month meeting regarding the kitchen as we near what I call go date, July one. I think we'll be ready for that. And finally, I just, just want to say that I'm looking forward to the new budget year and the different challenges and changes that come with it. Thank you.
Start with Timmy. Any?
I'm the lucky one, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would, these, the folks that stay back here in this dark room all the time. Again, I, part of this budget is helping them with some raises, which is very much earned. And not only them, but a lot of the other, lot of other folks that work for the county. But anyway, just to say thank you again. And one other item that doesn't seem like not a lot of people want to talk about, but I've been battling with, I went through two budget cycles, and I've watched, and it's the fairgrounds is what I'm talking about. And I've watched how we, you know, accumulate, we don't accumulate anything really, how the funds work there. The fairgrounds is something that is, is a jewel to our county. And we've actually even spent some money to do some studies of some of the things that might be a possibility of improvements of the fairground through possibly some state funding that may be far reaching, but still trying. But the system that we have with the fairgrounds right now is not working. I see that because there's no, the way it's set up, they really, we're not taking any, any monies whatsoever. And a lot of people, you know, I know people get into this thing like, you know, free stuff or whatever. But when you look at our, what we take in by, per group to have an outing over there, it takes that much money to take care of water, sewage, the grounds, electric, grounds keeping. And then a lot of times fixing, fixing a little bit of a mess it's left. And it's just, it's basically just stuck, really, it's stuck. So, you know, we have a choice. We can either, we can either try to come up with some solutions to, I would love to see that place. I mean, for years before I even realized, you know, we, we went over to the fairgrounds and stuff for many years, but back in the day, people, they raised monies, they built the stadium, the seats. They put a lot of money, and not to take anything away from all the people's put in, you know, a lot of time, a lot of money. And even Mr. Calhoun, who's just passed away, that, I mean, tons and tons of people. It's, it's no disregard for that at all. It's just trying to figure out a system that, whether we change the way we, you know, how we direct that, how we possibly, you know, if we need to, to get a event planner. I just, there was some things that I, we actually put in the budget when we first did, or some of the things that I would like to seen in the very beginnings of improving the place. Maybe adding on to the show barn, you know, possibly, you know, making the black building nicer. But when we get to the end, we find out like, okay, we've got this much money coming in, and we're going to have to take a big chunk, you know, a good chunk of our monies or the fund balance money to put back in it. And it just doesn't make sense. I mean, there's got to be a better way to do that. Now, I don't know if that means, I mean, I know we've tried this once before, maybe, you know, having a work session and think about how to make that better. I mean, I just seen the advertisement in the paper yesterday, today, actually, that there's something going to happen over there and it's going to be free. Well, you know, it's not free to take care of that place. And it's just the realities of it. And, and there could be some changing of fee structure. It could be a very minimum amount of money. I mean, when you have three, four, five thousand people, and you figure out a way to get a dollar a ticket or admission fee or something, would be, would be worth something to put back in the gravel or. I would love to see the picnic shelter be bigger because, you know, we're getting a, there's just a lot of things that could be better, but we're stuck right now. It's not going to get better the way it is. So I just, I just think we need to, you know, you know, and there may be more majority that, that don't want to do anything different and just sit on it, but I, I'm not that way. I really think there's potential over there, and we could really keep investing back in that if we have a different system. I don't know where that takes us to. You know, I'd be willing to, if we did a work session, you know, invite any of the fairgrounds people committee to come in that would like to have, be part of that discussion. Know there's a lot of good folks on that, sit on that, and like to hear what their thoughts are. But I just, either, either way, whether we, you know, you're never going to get everybody to agree on one thing, but the bottom line is, we have to change the way it's set up now to be able to grow. I mean, to be better. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Greg?
I just want to say I appreciate the dispatch, what they do. I don't know how they stand it back there with no windows. They do a good job there, there when none of the rest of us around. And I agree with Timmy a hundred percent on the fairgrounds. Something's got to be done on it.
Thank you. Phil?
I just want to say, kind of piggybacking off of that, we have a lot of things coming up in our community this month that I hope people will get out and enjoy. We just had music on Main this weekend. And this upcoming weekend, we're going to be having Fiber Fest at the fairgrounds. And there's also an event called Community Matters at Kraus Park. And that's from two o'clock until dark. And it is for people to come out and meet their neighbors and socialize and get out and talk. That's something that we've been missing out on since COVID. And this is meant as a, as a mental health awareness type thing, too. There's going to be a band and free food. Joe Friday's going to be playing. You know, one of my, one of my classmates, Stan Cox, he died from suicide. And he was in Joe Friday. And they're, they're playing as a tribute to him. But it's a time for people to come out and enjoy their community and enjoy each other. And I hope that people will come and do that. We've also got the, the Glade Creek Fire Department's putting on a car show this month. And, you know, we do need a pool in this community. That's something that I spoke about many times, that as a kid, I spent many hours up at the pool. And again, you've got to talk to your friends and your peers, and that's how you kind of learn how to adjust in society. And we're missing out on that. Our kids are missing out on that. So we need, we really need to supply that to them. And I'm hoping that our, our state senators are going to help us out with that, so. But that, that's all that I have, and thank you.
Thank you. John?
I echo the comments that have been made about nine one one. I sat in that seat, was training nine years ago for that. And it's a tremendous amount of pressure that's on their shoulders whenever they receive that call. When you lose someone, it affects you. The Memorial Day service was very good. I think it was very nice and very well attended at the Veterans Park. The only criticism that I would have is, there's a lot of gray beards, gray hair there. The young people, there were, there were few. I think it was more than we've had in the past. But I'd like to see more, possibly, the schools if they could attend. Of course, the VFW goes to the schools and has their program there. But I think it would be a little bit, a little more impact. I know it was, for me, as a young buck, whenever the D-Day film came out, whenever that first showing, all the D-Day veterans were allowed in for free. And I remember standing over on the courthouse and looking at these people that I knew, neighbors, friends, friends of the family, and never realized, because they never talked about D-Day or World War II, or what they had gone through. These kids need to be aware of that. There's three veterans on this board. Allegheny County is one of the top counties in the state of North Carolina for a veterans population. There are three hundred, I believe they said thirteen hundred graves of veterans in this county. Never realized that there was one veteran that had been awarded the Medal of Honor. You have graves from the Revolutionary War veterans in this county. Now, whenever I reflect back, we don't recognize those that die in training. But let me tell you, over the years, and I spent twenty-six years in the Marine Corps, twenty-one and a half on active duty, I never went to a major exercise that we didn't have someone seriously injured or killed. It's a dangerous profession. I remember my Aguis, came off of the coast of Vietnam, we had finished bringing out the refugees. My Aguis, what, what got me was the lieutenant that was awarded the Purple Heart. He came out of the helicopter that had been shot down. North Vietnamese were on the shoreline lined up like they were on the rifle range. Every Marine that he saw die was hit in the head. Seventy-five yards is not that hard of a shot. This, we need to recognize the people that made the ultimate price. And to do that, these kids have got to be exposed. They are not going to come to them. You won't know someone that's been in it because they don't jump up and down and say, I was there and beat their chest. Whenever you've got them bragging, you can guarantee they weren't there. So it was a good ceremony, usually is. We're realizing, the General Mets, people don't realize that we have a Lieutenant General retired in this county. His claim to fame, and this is what he, what he pronounces, was he commanded the Marines in the Second Battle of Fallujah. So we have a rich history. I believe that we need to touch on it. I would encourage, next time Memorial Day comes up, come on out for the services. Bring your grandkids, bring your kids. Memorial Day are, is for the ones that paid the ultimate price. It just galls the bejesus out of me when someone comes up and says, Happy Memorial Day. My day is veterans. Let's, please, recognize that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. As usual, going last, almost everything's been said, but I would like to say what Timmy was talking about, the fairgrounds. John's been around a long time with me, and it's been a concern that whole time. And it's time that we come up with some type of plan and work with the Fairgrounds Committee, the Advisory Committee, and see what we can come up with. The fairgrounds is our largest venue in the county. Last year was used, I think, more than ever before. And I'm hoping this year will almost be a repeat. Mother Nature has blessed us with a lot of rain these last few weeks, and that's had a challenge to some of the outdoor vents. But when you're outdoor, you can't control the weather. But we need, we need to utilize the fairgrounds a lot more than we do. And Timmy mentioned during the budget process, we had, I thought, a pretty good plan about expanding and improving the show barn, but it came down to dollars. And we just couldn't, couldn't afford that money. We shifted those funds to, to different organizations. But I would certainly like to see next year a lot more consideration given to, to the fairgrounds. Michelle mentioned the, we've been working with Senator Heiss and Representative Pickett, and we were hopeful that there would be some news about swimming pool money, but we still haven't heard anything with the legislature. They're in short session, and I expect to hear something sometime towards the end of June, maybe end of July. John's talked about the Veterans Park. We still have the brick sale going on. That will close out this year, I think, about the sixteenth of July. So if you still need to purchase a brick this year, see any of the members of the, of the Veterans Committee. And also, it's every Wednesday at the VFW, we have a representative there taking orders for bricks. And now also at the fair, at the Veterans Park, we have the Charters of Freedom now. And John, I think that's an excellent opportunity for the school system is to start bringing some of these children, some of these classes, and showing them the park, showing them the bricks, and winding up at the Charters of Freedom. That explains our history of this country, and it's a lot of history for Allegheny County. So I would encourage those, the teachers and the administration to start using the Veterans Park. And just in closing, many of you know Curtis Weaver. He's a local farmer. We've partnered on a lot of different cattle deals and other deals I probably shouldn't mention. But he underwent open heart surgery today. He went in at eight o'clock and he came out at one. And that was in Winston, and he got very good reports, is what I've been told from the doctors. So I'd just like to, just to mention that. So I'd just like to, uh, just to mention that. And Heather, do you have any comments? Any additional thoughts, Mr. Carter? Danielle? You introduce your mother to us. Have her stand up.
Sorry, Mom.
It's all right.
She won't blame you.
You're not, you're not on camera, she's staying away. But this, my mom's here, Diane Hutchins. She's staying with me for a few weeks, and she had to come and meet all of these hoodlums, especially Bobby. She couldn't wait to meet Bobby.
Thank you for attending tonight.
You're welcome.
Ms. April, any comments? With that being said, nothing else, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Oh, don't leave, I have everything for y'all to sign. That we went over.